The American justice system currently appears to be systematically broken. We do a lot of David and Goliath type cases.
We're a nation of laws, or at least we're supposed to be. We're gonna have to test the proofs that underlie this order which haven't been done.
Trying to fight for justice in the American way.
Spent thirty years in the police department. I've seen a lot. Know what's being said to you today and what you're reading. If it wasn't true ten years ago, then you have to question that.
How in the hell did we get here and where the hell are we going?
Hello, everybody. Welcome to another episode of Two Average Joes. You can see that we have three today. We'll get into that in a little bit, but we're looking forward to everybody being here. Of course, we have the other Joe, Robert Joey Baker. Say hello.
Joey Baker.
Hi. And we have our special guest star, Ken Byer. Glad to be here. And Ken is a small business owner, an inventor, and an inventor who took a leap of faith to trust in his Lord Jesus Christ. He is a frontline patriot and he leads the charge. He rides into the storm knowing that Jesus will provide his protection with the people, knowledge, skills, desires, opportunities he needs to do his will. Ken, man, I love that and I'm glad you're here. I actually read that and it was kind of like a Joe Biden cheat sheet moment. Except I wasn't talking about millions of people's lives. I was just reading Ken's bio. The difference. Yeah, that was a Joe Biden moment. Actually, to make, unfortunately, I don't know if y'all noticed, I wasn't able to quite get a little bit of drool.
Yeah, there we go.
Going down my chin. I tried, you know, but then again, I'm not crazy. So, Ken, man, it's great for you to be here. I'm excited. I really am. This is great. Love the flag.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. You know what? You know why they picked that animal, right?
Tell me.
They picked the rattlesnake. Our forefathers did. They picked rattlesnake because it rattles before it strikes.
Yes.
There's a lot of rattling going on right now.
I will tell you, this is the most interesting time I've ever been alive. I was just gonna share that with you. Robert, many a times that we've been together, it's like, look, you know, and I'm gonna be honest with you, Robert, when we're talking, we're like, I'm not a hundred percent sure what's going on, but something's going on. That's all I'm gonna say. Robert has something he had read about, and I think, you know, Ken definitely jumped in here on this one, but we're both Joe Rogan fans, that I pronounced Joe's last name correctly.
You got it right. So, I was reading and evidently it was a satire and I took it as real and evidently some other people did on the internet that Spotify was canceling Joe Rogan because he took some animal tranquilizer or whatever the heck that ivester, whatever that, that specific.
The wormer is what it is.
Ivermectin?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, the D worm.
Yeah. Like that, and they had, they had parodied it evidently and then, but it's not hitting any kind of media, of course, so I couldn't verify it. But evidently, Joe Rogan did catch the COVID and he's working through it with some alternative methods and this satirical site had said, well, you know, he's losing his hundred million dollar gig with Spotify because he took the, that worm medicine instead of doing the real deal and they had a, it's pretty, it was interesting, but and it was, the funny thing is, it wasn't surprising that they would try to cancel him because that seems like that everybody's getting canceled. And anyway, what do you got, Joe, on that one?
Um, I had, I felt bad when I found out it was a hoax because I had sent a letter to Spotify that we would do it for thirty-five million.
There we go.
I was, I was hoping that was gonna be like a tantalizing, thirty-five million, all of us, you can have it all.
Right, right, right.
Have you looked into ivermectin?
I have not.
No, and I'll tell you, I did a little bit and I know that there, there's, it's not what the people are saying. You know, I know that much. I just know that, um, I don't want to act like I know what it is, but I did enough to know that it's, it's, it's not what the mainstream media is making.
Yeah, the study that they did on it, they stopped it. They started to study. You always have to have a blind study where somebody gets the placebo, somebody gets the real deal.
Yeah.
They stopped it because it was so unethical because the people that didn't take it dying in such a high degree, it wasn't like fifty-one percent to fifty percent. They're dying in such a high degree that they said it's not fair, so they started giving the other people ivermectin at that time.
Yeah.
Was that part of the cocktail that Trump was taking?
No, he did remdesivir. Remdesivir is, uh, it's patented by Soros and China together. And remdesivir was patented as a euthanasia drug. So, if they go to, if you go to the hospital, which if you do go to the hospital, you got about, uh, it's the third leading cause of death in the United States, so keep that in mind if you're gonna go to the hospital for this and they want to put you on a ventilator. But the remdesivir, um, I don't, you know, that's where I don't get it, why Trump's talking about it because everybody that I talk to, it's patented by Soros, patented by China together as a euthanasia drug. I don't think I want to take that.
No, no. I think one of the crazy things is, and it's like when we do our regular talk, you know, and we're, I'm talking about my regular talk with anybody. You know, you get a lot of people, they're very passionate about whether or not you should get a vaccine, very passionate about whether or not you get a mask, very passionate about on both sides, right? But you hear, and then, and of course, everybody loves science, right? And they give everybody a T-shirt. They all love science. Most of them can't spell science, but God bless them. They love science, okay? But the reality of it is, you don't hear a lot about science. You know, like what you just said about studies or, you know, people, I watched something on TikTok that was sent to me and it was a nurse and it was like, you know, some of these things, they just, it's just the chemicals in them don't make me feel comfortable. And here's what's weird. That's a legitimate question. See, that's where I have trouble. That's why I get knocked back a little bit. It's like, I didn't say take a vaccination or take, or not take one. I didn't say, we're about freedom, right? We're about freedom, okay? I didn't say wear a mask or didn't wear a mask. I didn't say go get a test or not get a test. But if I say, you know, there's a few people, people who are professionals going, there's some things, some chemicals that just don't seem to be good or natural or before this, there wouldn't have been something that you would have used, right? Or maybe this one thing that you wouldn't think about that works, works, you know, it's like, the fact that you can't have an open discussion about that is what bothers me.
That's what's brutal.
Yeah, we're looking at two different sciences though. I mean, we're, we're looking at the science, medical science, you know, that type of science and the other side's looking at political science.
Yeah, I would agree.
I agree there too.
Yeah, Ken, I think you hit the nail on the head on that. I, I, I think you're right. I think that the day that, and I think this kind of ties into the Joe Rogan thing, Rogan thing too, and I'll get back on that, do circle on it. But the second it started, it was always about political science. It became political all the way. And the thing about Joe Rogan that's interesting is, from the moment he got that hundred thousand dollar contract, which by the way, I'm jealous too.
Hundred million, hundred million.
A hundred million, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred million. Sorry about that. I was trying to take his money away, right?
Yeah.
There was a tremendous amount of jealousy and just ugly articles written about him. This is before he got COVID. Right? And so it doesn't surprise me that you had that weird article with it. Because there always seemed to be some jealousy on him, so it's like, you know, we're so weird as a nation now where a lot of what we're doing seems to be so driven by petty jealousies and politics and people wanting to be self-righteous, you know? And I'm not picking on anybody and I'm gonna make somebody mad that's watching this, but you know, I got a couple of people I know, you know, they're like, they haven't done a healthy thing a day in their life. You understand what I'm saying? Not one day have they been healthy. And now all of a sudden, they're on Facebook giving me health advice. I'm like, you know, you could be right. But you have no right to talk about it because you're the unhealthiest person I've ever known.
You're right.
I'm smoking some crack right now, but I think all of y'all should be vaccinated. I don't know. I'm out of control. I don't know. I don't, I don't get it. Well, Ken, I wanna go and move into something that we've talked about on this before, but it's such a big deal and it's getting ready to happen again in Colorado and Dallas. And it's the Reawaken America Tour. And I know you were out there with our good friend Kent.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, you know, just give us a little bit of background. Robert was there, every, all the cool kids were there. That's why I wasn't there.
It, uh, I think it was, it was incredible. It was the first, I, the first thing I did when I got there. I, I want a job. You know, I want something to do. You know, we, we've been sitting surfing the internet, uh, looking at the hope porn.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, we're mainlining the hopium, trying to, yeah, trying to wait for something to happen and, you know, somebody's gonna come on in a big white horse and save the day and Trump's gonna be president and, you know, we're waiting for something to happen, so you keep looking. And I've learned some incredible things, like Elvis is alive, right?
Yeah.
Walt Disney was possibly Hitler.
Listen, I, I know, you know, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that. What did you say? We're addicted to what? Hope porn?
Hope porn, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna tell you, um, Ken, I don't know if you made that up, but I'm stealing it as of today. Ken, I'm gonna be honest with you. It's been, it's like, nobody's, there's almost this weird feeling, and this is not, please, if you listen to this, do not comment on some religious thing, because I'm not talking. Please stop. But here's what I'm gonna say. Nobody's coming to save us. We need to save ourselves.
Exactly. And going to that show was like, the first day is like, is almost, I didn't go to the bathroom. I didn't eat. I didn't drink. Eight hours and I took it all in. You'd think they'd have a break, but they didn't. I just sat there. I just, just couldn't move. And it wasn't about politics. It was like a revival meeting.
Right.
They're saying like, this is like an awakening for, you know, the Holy Spirit. And the Holy Spirit can do some amazing things because I'm not that smart.
Right.
You know, nobody's that powerful, but when you, you bring in the Holy Spirit, everything is possible. And that's what was exciting. So like the second day, you get there and you, you sit down, you're thinking, this time I'll go get a break and go to the bathroom. You don't. You just find another seat and you, I stood the whole time. I went down, stood right down there. I stood for six hours. I sat for two hours in the back, but and you're just taking it all in and it's, I mean, it's like you're goosebumps in Holy Spirit. And I think, I think, uh, I think we're supposed to have that kind of excitement, but for Grand Rapids, Michigan, it was like, it was a reawakening, you see? And I don't know where the heck all of the suburban housewives came. Because it was like seventy percent housewives from.
That's what I was blown away.
Yeah, it's amazing.
I told Joe, I'm like, man, where's all these women coming from? I don't know.
And they were passionate, standing up.
Fired up.
Fired up. Yeah, it was great. I was, I was sitting in Newport News, Virginia. That all you need to know. Ken, you know, that's, you follow up that what I just said good is like, when I say nobody's coming to save us, I, I am aware, just like you and I agree with what you said, there is a spiritual awakening that can save us. But if you're waiting for human flesh and blood to come in and save the day, that, that, that's not happening.
It's not happening.
And I also think, here's the other worry I have, and I want Robert's opinion after me and then, you know, you jump in. I, I almost think this problem with this hope porn is that it, and I, God, there's never been a better term for it, okay? Is it kind of takes you out of the fray, like you and me, you know, I think all three of us agree, we want a job. Right? We want a draw, job in this, this movement, in this passion, right? But the problem with the hope porn, I really believe, hope porn, I believe, is that it actually seems to take people where they, well, I don't have to do anything. I want to sit here and I'm gonna watch YouTube videos. Someone's gonna ride in with the right horse and it's all gonna be okay tomorrow. I'm gonna wake up and the right person's gonna be president and we got a lot of fighting to do. We got a lot of struggle. And Robert, what do you think on that? Because I think you feel the same.
I, I do. And the main thing is, is that, I mean, we've had a long series of voter apathy in the United States of where everybody's saying, well, one, my vote doesn't count, or secondarily, if it does, you know, um, I don't have any input into what's going on, but that Grand Rapids Reawaken America Tour thing shows that if you show up, I mean, you can change something. I mean, that is, that's a growing, I think there's a groundswell coming, actually. It felt like it to me and I don't know how Ken feels about it, but I surely felt, and I wasn't there all three days. I was only there for a few hours. I was there with Marlena Hackney, who's the lady who got thrown in jail for slinging food here in Michigan. But as, as I've said before, as a practicing attorney, they're eroding our rights and it's coming for you, okay? It's coming to a neighborhood near you. If it hasn't already, the police are losing all of their authority or they're trying to take it away from them. The, the, uh, our established politicians are not telling us the truth. Therefore, Joe and I were talking about it earlier, that it's giving fertile ground for these conspiracy theories that are out there because you're like, well, they're lying to us. And we know they're lying to us. So, all this other crazy stuff out there could be true.
Yeah. I mean.
And what's your take on that?
I, I got activated. It activated me. It got me from behind the keyboard because we were asked to be keyboard warriors at one time.
Yeah.
I came from behind a keyboard and I jumped my butt right into a county commissioners meeting. And I went in with the Holy Spirit. That's it. And I said, you guys used to be able to hide really good, but you have identified yourself, you're cutting a herd by yourself by taking away our freedoms and our rights and you've been screwing us for years. Get ready. I said, a reckoning is coming. There's gonna be a reckoning.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a reckoning. And I went on, I said, I'm not gonna stand up here and give you proof. You've, I've got a lot better people that have all kinds of evidence that COVID's not real, that it was man-made, that you guys are setting yourself up for the biggest lawsuits to ever hit this county ever. So, keep it up. I'm looking forward to like, taking your job if I have to, but there's a lot of good people that are gonna replace you and you're gonna help us do that.
Right. I think one weird thing is because it goes to and frosted, like Trump first, he said, this is man-made. Then everybody poo-pooed that. Then several months ago, it was kind of like, and Jon Stewart has, by the way, the best I ever saw anybody when he was on the Bear Show or whatever that clown's name is and, um,
Yeah.
And, you know, where he, he goes crazy and around his show and he's, you know, it was man-made. And, uh, then that kind of died again and I don't think, and you know, and when he put it into just regular people and you go, okay, you know, y'all three, you know, you know, we all gotta be worried about COVID. No one said we're not worried about COVID. It just seems that you can't get straight answers from people. You can't, where did this start from? I mean, it always seems to come back that it was man-made, right? And then that gets poo-pooed and stuck on the back burner. And then you get, okay, we all gonna get vaccinated or we need to get vaccinated. And now we're on, you got the White House going, you know, we're gonna get booster shots in September and then got the CDC going, oh, 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 hold the door on that. We're not sure, right? And you're, you're reading all of this and it's so convoluted. And I'm not talking conspiracy theory. I'm talking regular mainstream media and it's a mess the way it's given to us.
Yeah.
And then, you know, somebody like Ken or Robert or me goes, hey, you know, it all seems just a little dicey. The next thing you know, you're not on Facebook anymore.
Right.
I mean, we didn't even say anybody was lying. Your information must mess, that you're just slob of mess you call information makes me uncomfortable. And next thing you know, you're fake, if they would get, you know? And I, and I'll tell you something, Robert, you said something, and I think, Ken, you and I, when we've had conversation before, I think when we met before, I understand. If you don't think that they're coming for, for you, you're insane.
Yeah.
Because anybody off of that track is, um, um, are gonna be a problem. In your own opinion, because I mean, you caught the fire and you saw what it was. Give me your opinion on what you thought would be, um, how's this gonna grow and where is it going? I mean, I think it's a big deal.
For a while, it's just been you, me and like Robert, just, uh, and guys like us being America's alarm clock, trying to make everybody up. And they're sleeping in like a teenage kid. They're not getting up. They're not doing anything, right? It's awful. But what I saw there and what I'm witnessing now is, uh, I mean, it, this mask thing. Moms defending their kids, wanting them to have choice and, you know, kids that have, uh, you know, kids that have issues, I mean, really bad problems, they have IEPs that, you know, they, they can't wear a mask. I saw a little, little boy with Down syndrome and talked to his mom and she's just like, he can't wear a mask, you know, and be safe. So, it's, they're being, it's not you and I waking them up anymore.
Right.
This mask mandate waking them up. It's my wife. She's been a nurse for twenty-seven years. There's forty percent of Zeeland Hospital right here in Western Michigan that's getting ready to walk. They're more excited about walking, standing up for their rights right now than they are losing their, you know, earned time pay type thing going on right now. My wife's willing to walk, leave twenty thousand dollars at that place because she's willing to stand up for her rights. You know, that would have never happened with you, me and Robert talking about it, right?
Yes.
So, I think there's a, I mean, these things are uncomfortable, but I really believe that there is a good side about it and, you know, people are gonna leave the soccer games and the football games and get their butt to a couple, uh, school board meetings and stand up for themselves. Which was really interesting, school board meeting that I went to, they read how many people were there like for the last five times. It was zero. Zero parents showed up and I'm guilty of this. I went to my first school board meeting on Thursday, Monday. And then seven showed up, five showed up, fifty showed up. They were there for three minutes and they shut the door. They didn't know what to do. They wet themselves and went running. I mean, this is what's, this is what's happening. So, this time, a hundred and fifty people showed up. Next time, I'm gonna have five hundred people show up. And we're not gonna stop. This is, this is more people are waking up than I have ever imagined that would have in such a short period of time. So, there's, there's gonna be a reckoning and it's gonna be probably before the next election. People are gonna want to fix this last election.
Yes, I agree with you. I'll tell you something. I, I think it's weird because there is a social media outlet that, that just, you know, the social media outlets that have let people kind of see people, what they think. Like, there is some people who I've been really stunned with, who seem to be comfortable with saying things like, you know, let's fire everybody that, and I mean, I'm sitting here on Facebook and this person is a person I respect. It's like, yeah, I think if they don't get a vax, they should get fired from their jobs and lose everything. I'm like, you know, you have to walk down the street after you said that. I, I don't, I mean, I mean, I mean, I could say, hey, go get a vax. Um, I, I could say, that's what I did. I could say, hey, I think it's the best thing. But they're like wanting people to get fired. You know, I actually saw something on there and I, I marvel because I think that there is a cross-section of, of people who, who just, their righteousness is unbelievable. And, and basically said, it's time to mandate all of these things and make people, are you crazy? You know, you're crazy. I get it. I said, by the way, I want you to be, I sent your, sent your son for it. I think you should volunteer your time to go up there, knock on the door and tell these people, you're gonna take them out of their house and give them a vaccination. Come back and tell me how that worked out for you, okay? But Robert, go ahead on there because I knew you have some things you said when we were going.
Well, I mean, I don't want to pivot yet to January the sixth, but Ken, when you were there, I mean, I understand that you went out to dinner, I believe, with that professor from the, the New Mexico.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, um, I, I was texting with Joe during the actual meeting and I said, Joe, this guy, I mean, there were some fiery speakers up there, but his, I enjoyed and got the most out of his, up to, you know, the, the mainline guys, which was Roger Smith and then, um,
Roger Stone.
Mike, Mike Flint, Roger Stone. I'm sorry. What, who did I say?
Roger Smith. He was there too, but nobody knew.
Right. Anyway, and, and so anyway, so we were, you know, we would like to get, um, I know he's making the rounds, but I would like, we would like to interview that, uh, New Mexico professor. But what did you, what did you grasp from eating dinner with him as far as what happened to him? Because my understanding was, is that he, he either got fired or they took away all his classes that he was teaching at law school in New Mexico.
Yeah, he stood up. It's a great video, the one that I saw that he did. I mean, this guy's, uh, he just told his students, he's like, you know, I'm not wearing, he's going over mask policy in his classroom. And he's like, I'm not wearing a mask because I'm not insane. I'm not taking a vaccine because I'm not insane. I have not gone crazy. I am looking at the science. You guys are looking at political science and, and students were getting up and walking out. They were just, they were leaving and they were running right down to the dean's office to, to let it know. But, you know, being a professor.
Their civic duty of blowing him in.
Yeah. You know, I've got the perfect job for this. My company's, you know, we clean drains. They can't answer coaching me. Plug your toilet, you're calling me. You know, being a professor, they just, they evicted him.
Yeah.
They didn't even talk to him. They didn't even say, hey, here's your job. They gave him award for being like the greatest man on earth for that camper. They gave him a word that same day, took it out. They didn't tell him he got fired. And then he gets on a plane, him and his wife are sitting there. She lifts her mask down, takes a sip of water. They haul, they, they didn't take off right away because of this, right? They had to come right over, even though people were sitting around him without their mask on.
Right.
They came on to pick on his wife, who is a sweetheart. Erin Clements is like probably one of the nicest women on earth. I'm telling you, this lady's a saint. So, they, they pick, pick on her. They go get a team of really hardcore, the, I think it's like the A-team for like harassing people. They separate them to the back of the plane. They end up kicking them off in Dallas. It takes them two extra days to get there, so he's the last speaker at the event. You know, so we're leaving and, and he's not even sure he's gonna be able to get a ride back. You know, we're walking out, um, and it was, it was one of those moments where like, we kind of ran into each other, but some guy was trying to find him a place to stay. He's like, I don't know, I know my wife's gonna let him stay with me. And I'm like, huh, what's going on? He's like, well, he can't get a place to stay right now. They've canceled his credit cards. He's, I mean, they're, they're running into all kinds of issues. So, he's like, there he is. So, I went up, said, hey, uh, my name's Ken Byer. I'm a friend you haven't met yet. Um, what can I do to help you? I'll drive you back to New Mexico if you need it. And he goes, I might need that. Are you hungry? He goes, yeah. So, we had the privilege of going out to eat with him and his wife. It was funny. I'm not a crazy man. My name's Ken. This is my wife, Sally, and, uh, we're bringing it. And she's like, oh, no, this is great. But the faith that they walked with, right? Anybody else would have been freaked out, but they didn't have any worry. My wife and I talked about it later. It was amazing. But once we sat down with them, wow, what a, what a, what a wonderful, you know, group of people. They made me a part of the Michigan audit force. And, uh, it was a, you know, it was just a, it was a divine meeting and since then, I mean, we've been texting, talking to each other every other day or so. And just, uh, just a neat, a neat experience. But that led me to another guy that brought me a whole bunch of papers of this.
Yeah.
That's the Lord working in not so mysterious ways because this guy showed me evidence where we don't have to get a subpoena. We don't have to call in anybody, no witnesses. We can show that there's proof right here of fraud right here in Allegheny County.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's amazing, but yeah, uh, we'll get David on here, I'm sure.
Good, yeah. And that's Professor David Clemmons.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, because we want to make sure we give him the love because I'll tell you something, um, and one of the interesting things is that, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to step out there and you're gonna, we'll probably lose friends, you know, we'll probably have people who, you know, will go, oh, that's just crazy conspiracy stuff, you know, and nobody lost their job. He didn't do what he's supposed to do. You know, one time me and Robert were talking, somebody thought it was okay. Marlena spent five days in jail for serving food and I mean, I can't fix that.
Right.
After we made Marlena, after we made Marlena's video, I'm just gonna support what you just said. Yeah, we are gonna lose friends. I have lost friends. My mom, my mom called me up and said, forget that you have parents.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
You have parents. My mom, my mom and dad deforced me because I made a video of Marlena.
Yeah. No, I, I will tell you this, and this is kind of an interesting thing, and I want to, I want to say two things before I get into this one. One, I'm in my mask on the airplane going from Allegheny, Michigan to Chicago. This is me. We all got a dirty sock over our face, but we're, there's no possible way we could do this, that there could be any germs spread, you know? So, I mean, you know, I mean, I, I mean, that happened. And the other one is I, I taught high school for a couple of years with the mask and I'm gonna, well, one year with the mask, um, because the, it's the end of the year of COVID and now you're gonna teach with the mask. And, and look, this isn't petty. It's just aggravating to try to teach with the mask on and it's coming down and you're trying to keep it up and you got the kids and everybody acts like, well, you know, it's gonna be very easy. Well, it's because you're saying that because you're not trying to teach kids and you're not having kids trying to talk back to you with masks and you don't have the fact that, you know, it's, it's, it's just a very difficult situation and people get all philosophical, you know, they'll tell me stuff like, you know, that surgeon wears a mask all day. Had open-heart surgery. My surgeon wore a mask for a long time. Thank God, bless him. He also didn't get it out of his car after it's been sitting there twelve days, okay?
And it's a medical device. That's why he's ruining it.
Sock is not.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a medical device. At schools and people that are forcing it on people, they're not allowing the proper training to wear a medical device. They're not, I mean, it's crazy. I mean, I think.
I'm with you a hundred percent. And I told you when we were having a talk when we did our pre-meeting a couple of days ago, look, a lot different if they were handing out masks every fifteen minutes, right? You know, and, and had biohazard bins everywhere, but we do a lot of stuff and this is an American problem. We do a lot of stuff because it makes us feel better.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And then if you say, ah, that doesn't seem to make a sense. Well, Joe, this makes me.
Yeah, it makes as much sense as peeing in the pool because you guys bathe in suit up, right?
It's the truth, you know, we do a lot of stuff to feel better. And then like I said, you know, the scary part is you say that on Facebook and then boom, you know, you're in Facebook jail or you're done.
Ken, are you aware? Ken, are you aware that, that Alleghen County, uh, Health Department is sending out letters to parents that believe that their children came into contact with somebody who had COVID? And it's a, it's a nasty letter. It is, it's basically saying, if you don't do what we're telling you to do, uh, one, you've given up all your constitution. I mean, it's saying, yeah, you can take us to court later on, but we're gonna, we're basically gonna drag you into court. And it kind of implied that they're gonna snatch your kids from them. Did, did you, are you aware of that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right away. I heard a lot of that right there. I mean, that is like, yeah, that, that's a, that's a big rattle. That's a big rattle. I mean, people are not gonna tolerate that. And I heard both from, you know, Republicans and Democrats on this whole thing. Oh, man. I mean, so this is a, another great alarm clock going off. I mean, it's waking up more people. This movement's gonna get huge. I don't know how they, I don't know who they got managing their, uh, their PR account right now, but they're not doing good.
No, no.
You don't pick on people's kids.
No, no. I'll tell you something too. It's weird because I think, I think that going back with what Robert said about the latter was nasty. And Robert, we need to try to get a copy and put that down below.
I'll get that too.
Get that to me and I'll make sure we get a link on there and people can check that out. Um, I think one of the things is, is the alarm clock and waking up people and Ken, before we go into June, January 6th, excuse me, and you know, I, I know you need to be, and say a little bit about that and, you know, keep what you kind of saw there, but I gotta say this before we go on here. This, I don't think, this is just my humble opinion. Okay. I think there's a lot of people out there who think they know what's going on. I don't think people understand how angry people are getting.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, and I don't want anybody to do anything bad or wrong, and we're not encouraging it and all that other stuff. You know, nobody wants that. We all want to be good people. But if you don't think that people are getting angry, it's like the, the, the person that posted, I don't want people to get fired. I mean, you know, you could have to walk down the street, right? You know, you know, not everybody is, is into this righteousness that seems to have come out of the left, you know? It's gonna get interesting. Robert Mann, what, what do you think on that?
Well, Joe and I have talked about it, Ken, and, and maybe you have a feeling on this too. It seems like they are radicalizing the non-radicalizable people.
I agree.
That they are pissing off, um, what did you say? Suburban housewives?
Yeah.
That is not who I, you know, when I went and looked out in that crowd, I was like, man, that is a lot of women that, and they are not, they were like fervently mad. They weren't just like, I mean, they were enthusiastic. They were everything you want somebody to be. So they were not apathetic in any way, that, that awesome. And then I have one suggestion, which is we've probably gone about 40 minutes. Joe and I are trying to keep it to 40 minutes. And I think that your January 6th thing could be a whole episode on itself. What is your take on that, Joe?
I agree. And I, I just, I just think we need to have them back.
Yeah. And I'll get the, I'll get the stuff dialed in as far as Zoom, so we can go without having to have the circle jerk of the technology, uh, breaking the, because we were going good.
Do you think, do you think we need, can you do it? Ken, can you come back and us, I handled?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But do give us one, one brief that, and, and just let me know, you can answer, but you be there. What they're saying on TV may not be true.
Has it ever been true?
Is your possibly there?
I can't tell you if, uh, I haven't watched TV since the fourth of November. I, I canceled my cable. I did all of that.
You know, I think you're right. We want to have you back and give that its full due. And I also want to say this to you. I think that there is a part of, um, that, um, I'm gonna have an article out at the end of next week and it won't, the link won't be here. I'm gonna be honest with you. If it's gonna be out at the end of next week and we'll, we'll get, we'll get it out there and it's called A New Movement. And the article was written specifically from the fact of what you said. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna change it, but I'm, I'm gonna steal your thing later about the Hope porn and the alarm awakenings and stuff, because I'm gonna tell you something. If you religiously believe, let me emphasize this, that you know the Holy Spirit's gonna come and that this is gonna be, that this is gonna be handled and all things are gonna come through God. Good. I'm with you. If you believe a man, a single man is gonna lead us to the promised land, you might want to think again. It's gonna be all of us. Everybody is going to have to take a risk.
Yep. And these women, these ladies that were at that show, they, you know, guy probably just sit back just happy that he's not getting, you know, getting in trouble. However, I know that when the moms go home and show dad that letter and really explain to what's going on, they're gonna get their butts up off the.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree.
They're gonna get off the couch and they're gonna have to fight this fight with them. And there's gonna be, that's the, that's a secondary movement that's gonna happen. Moms are gonna start motivating dads to, to get up and start talking.
Yeah, because I think you're gonna hear the, I, I will tell you that letter and again, get it to me, Robert. I'll put it in the link. Let me, let me tell you something. And make no mistake about it. There, there's, there's just, they're drawing lines in the sand. And you're gonna find people who were not upset before getting upset.
Yep.
And Ken, you're gonna have to find people that need to, to, to lead and to organize. And I do believe that's part of what your, mine and Robert's goal is. You know, we're gonna help. So yeah, let's do that. We'll get back hopefully, um, maybe as early as next week. If we can work it in our schedule, we'll all get there. Everybody with that?
Yeah.
We'll just deal with the January 6th things. And, um, hopefully next week. How does that sound?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Okay, buddy. I'll get with you. Look, we appreciate everybody coming and being here. And this is the point, the last couple of minutes where, yes, you're right. I beg. Okay? Look, independent media, and that's what two average Joes are. That's what Ken and Kent are doing. That is what a lot of people in this country are trying to do because we want to get you the truth. But the best part I can say is, is that we're willing to do it. We're willing to take the job. We are willing to step up to do it. But we're gonna need your support. And nobody here, whether it's Ken, or Robert, or me, or the people in the background, everybody's trying to get to be a millionaire, we ain't sitting here. I'll go, guy, I don't, I'm not interested in having my dog have air conditioning in his doghouse. Okay? Um, I'm not interested in any of that. But I am interested in getting this message out and we're gonna need people's support. In the very near future, two average Joes are gonna have a bit of a fundraiser. We're gonna ask for people to help us and support us and we hope you can do it. We're not looking for a million dollar donations. Unless of course you want to give us one. But any little bit that you can give you help. So look, it's independent media. If we lose independent media, there will be no meeting. End of story. There will be no meeting. So we thank you and we appreciate you being here. We'll see you next week. Um, with everything going right, Robert and I will be back. We'll be back with Ken and we are gonna be talking about January 6th. There you go. Y'all have a great day and we'll see you here again real soon.